Okay, do we have any need for executive session tonight?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. We may want to talk about a police personnel matter in executive session.
One personnel?
Yeah.
Any other?
Not that I've got.
Hearing no others. We have a motion to adjourn executive session for one personnel.
Second.
Then made second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Do we need to amend the agenda, which I believe we do.
Yeah, I had two things. There's a couple of typos I apologize for. Under new business, we've listed the Lister error and omissions twice. And under Rutland Regional Planning Commission unfortunately reads Rutland Regional Chamber of Commerce.
So we'll correct that.
Yes. And I think there were a couple of requests for additional items. Hank Pelkey would like to speak about a coin drop under new business for the library. And Randy, while we're talking about the trail run at the end of the list of new business items, would like to give us a brief update on the work on a shelter for lifeguards at the rec area.
Any others? No, we'll entertain a motion.
It's been moved.
It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go close. As have it. Now, we adopt the agenda. As corrected. The motion's that.
Motion.
Have motion made, seconded. Been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
We'll act on the orders.
How about Simon?
We've got the minutes, Ed. I didn't look in my sheet, Joe. I'll get there eventually. Oh, I will, don't worry. She keeps me straight. Yeah, is there any corrections on the minutes of August 7th?
You on the orders, Tom?
No, we're doing the minutes right now, Joe. I'll get to those in a second. I skipped ahead here for a minute.
It's his first day.
Yeah, it is. First day on the job.
You had liquor board?
Oh, I didn't see that under there.
Is what you just signed off on?
No.
And this is regular that needs to be signed?
That was all put together. My mistake. I didn't pull it apart, sorry about that.
So, do you want this back, ask if there's any changes on liquor board?
Seems we've already signed it.
Uh huh.
That's what we did with it. Any admissions or corrections on that one? Very short.
Yeah, very short.
See if we else I know. I didn't think there was. Now, Joe, you up on the orders. Any questions?
I see there's a return in crumpled bond, a thousand dollars. Probably I should know what that is.
It's actually on the agenda, but we can talk about it. West Creek Road has a new resident who wanted to bury his electric line from a pole across the street. So we allowed there to be a cut as long as he put up some deposit for our security.
Okay.
The project's been done and approved by the highway foreman. And the recommendation is to release the $1,000 bond he put up.
Sure. It looked like something different and I couldn't quite figure out what it was.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions on the orders?
Yeah, the appropriation for the Marble Valley Regional Transit.
Yeah.
Is that?
It's an annual appropriation. It's approved as part of the special appropriations at town meeting every year. It's a $5,000 charge for the convenience of people in town to use that service.
Oh, okay.
It hasn't changed in 10 years I've been doing it.
Was it also supposed to say consultation bank charge? Or is that, is that change, what is that?
Again, we have limited space unfortunately. But the explanation is like this. When the town clerk's office decided to switch banks for better rates and savings to the town, we had to bring in our software folks at NIMREC to help with the transition in terms of accounts and automated deposits and that kind of thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And we got FY '19.
That is going to be the last stuff from last fiscal year.
I did have one other question. So we have winter sand coming from two different places?
Yeah, there's usually a mixing that takes place between, I think, Markowski's sand and Florence crush stone.
Oh, okay.
And sand and a lot of crush stuff.
Tracture for the wintertime.
Which we wish to mix more sand in. Right? I'm not the only one, though. Tom Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. West Creek Road reconstruction project update. Markowski Excavating began approximately three weeks of work reconstructing the stretch of West Creek Road between the Bovee Farm to the north and the Hard Farm to the south on Monday, August 12th. At present, Markowski appears to be on schedule despite having to remove some ledge. Today marks the halfway point in the project and paving will follow approximately one month after this work is completed because we're going to wait till paving comes for Whipple Hollow Road. Now, as to that update, Markowski Excavating will begin approximately four weeks of work reconstructing the stretch of Whipple Hollow Road between the railroad trestle at the intersection of West Creek Road to the east and Dido's Dip to the west on or about Tuesday, September 3rd, the day after Labor Day, with paving coming immediately after that work's done for both Whipple Hollow and then to top off West Creek Road. The town plans to widen West Creek Road just south of the intersection with Kendall Hill Road has been delayed while we get work done to the hydraulic system with the backhoe. We're waiting for an estimate of the cost to address what we think is a hydraulic problem with the piece of equipment, so stay tuned for that. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission has deployed its traffic counter on Furnace Road at the so-called Wedding Cake House location at the town's request. As you may recall, Abby Marza-Garrier had asked the town to do so as she has asked for a speed limit reduction in the area. The deployment is now completed and we expect to receive a follow-up report from RRPC sometime very soon. And we're hoping to get this matter on for September 4th's agenda. And I've already let Abby know that she can probably plan to be here then if she'd like to be. There was a library bench dedication event on Pittsford Day, Saturday, August 17th, at the McClure Library. The bench was carved by talented young artists and artisans working with the staff of the West Rutland Carving Studio. If you weren't able to attend the dedication ceremony, I hope you all can visit the library soon to marvel at that excellent project. On Thursday, August 8th, I, along with the Assistant Clerk Treasurer, met, and my assistant, Linda Drummond, met with local census 2020 Representative Peter Hathaway, who discussed the importance of the decennial census, constitutionally mandated, of course, and how he hopes Vermont towns will partner up to help spread the word about the upcoming count of all people living in the United States. There may be someone able to come address the Select Board and through the Board and through PEG TV, the general public, about the census at one of the October meetings. So stay tuned for that. On Tuesday, August 13th, the town manager met with the new Rutland County Forester Kyle Mason to discuss and visit the town's 298-acre forest parcel in the town of Chittenden surrounding our water source. The town has this land enrolled in the state's current use program to minimize taxation on it. And as a result, it's obliged to update its forest management plan sometime in the next year. So he'll be helping us with that. On Monday, August 19th, I met along with our town bookkeeper and highway foreman with FEMA representatives for our so-called recovery scoping meeting regarding our April 15th rainstorm and our costs associated with that. And the process will move forward with more documentation from the town to FEMA and hopefully a check at some point. The trade-in transaction involving the old Ford Police Cruiser and our new Dodge Truck Cruiser will take place tomorrow, manning some kind of catastrophe. And we'll have that stenciled with the appropriate markings that we've agreed to shortly thereafter. So look for that on the town roads coming up soon. Finally, the offices will be closed Monday, September 2nd in observance of Labor Day.
Any questions, Tom Manager? Is there any Select Board remarks tonight?
None.
None? 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 No, we'll go into any public comment tonight.
Interestingly enough, by listening to John's report, that we're getting, we are getting ready for the census 2020.
Yep.
And at the end of the last census, Pittsburgh was shown losing about 600 residents. Understandably so at the time because of the change of leadership and positions and location of the AMIA Business Office to Cincinnati. However, it was too late and I did speak with the town manager at that time, and I feel that Pittsburgh was underaccounted after looking at the checklist, looking at the population of the schools, was factoring in some people that aren't on the checklist and people not in school. I thought we were undercounted by about 200, 250 people. That makes a big difference.
Yeah, it does.
Makes a big difference to state aid, makes a big difference in your representation and other things coming down the line. So I'll be more, have a eye with John, a little bit more careful of those numbers when we get them from the census. But we were clearly undercounted last time. It actually, it actually changed your house representation from a single-member district to a two-member district. So it's a difference and it made a big difference. And actually, anything could change, make up the workforce inventory. So it's important to have those numbers.
This might be coming at a good time.
I'll let you know when we schedule him for the Select Board.
Go ahead, Dave.
Is there any way you could have whoever's out in the audience?
Oh, get closer so you can hear.
I assume that was Butch, maybe?
It was. It was.
I can only hear about one out of every 10 words.
Oh, okay.
So I didn't want to interrupt him, but it would be nice if they could come up so I can hear.
Sure. We will do that.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll go into old business. We have a representative here from the state of Vermont. Maybe he could come up closer to the table.
If that's agreeable.
If that's agreeable, I have no problem with him. Bring his chair right up here to the table. And that way, Dave, you can hear him, I think.
Yep, thank you.
This is Derek Kennison, who has been kind of our liaison, asking about the project and whether we wanted to commit to it. We just sent him our commitment form following the last Select Board meeting. And I explained to Derek that there's a lot of Select Board questions about what's next and how we might adjust the scope if it is the town's wish to do some economizing and do what we think is a minimal but safe project by at the same time meeting V-Trans standards since I assume we're going to have to meet your standards since you're providing grant funds.
So that being said, I guess.
Well, I know one of the big questions was the, so the grant came with a specific end and start point. And like having looked at it, there is like a section that
Could do away with it.
Could do away with it, which would save us some money. So not knowing if, would we have to start the grant process all over again with different parameters on the project? Or can we shorten it by X amount of feet and still fall, fall in the?
So you can adjust the length of it as long as it has a logical term. So whatever you're changing that to, as long as it makes sense, you know, not dead ending or creating situations dangerous, that you could do that within reason. We don't want to cut it down to 25%
Right.
Of what it was, but if you're looking at.
Can you get him a little closer, Tom?
Plus, he's speaking fairly soft, so you gotta project, speak up, so. Actually, I could move the phone maybe closer, too.
The first answer, Dave, was that we can reduce the scope as long as it's not too dramatic in amount, like 75%. And it needs to have a logical start and endpoint, not just disappearing and creating its own safety hazard.
Right.
Are you familiar with what was there?
I think what Alicia and I, in measuring it and whatever, what we are looking, or what I am thinking of anyway, and I think Alicia does too, is to go from the town hall south
Which is the school.
To the guardrail. That, that is the section where we have the problem with people driving on the sidewalk. The mailman delivers mail. He drives on the sidewalk to deliver mail to people. Furnace Road is where people just pull right out on the sidewalk to drive around people. Any kids walking, that is the section they walk on. The section from the school north to the bridge, any children that are in that area are going to cut crosswalks to get to school. They don't, as far as we know, walk on that sidewalk. And the main thing is, is child safety and, and resident safety. And it, there aren't a lot of people that walk from the bridge up to the town hall. It's the other section.
And when you, when Dave says town hall, he means the school building?
Yeah, it's our town hall, but the school, whatever, yeah.
And also, right there in front is a crosswalk that goes across seven that picks up the other sidewalk. So any kids that were going north would just cross and pick it up. So that section towards Mechanic is kind of, would be a side, is kind of a sidewalk to nowhere.
I think you need to start, if you want to change, start the school property, though.
That's what we are talking about.
For the driveway, so the both driveways are covered, yes.
Yes, yes.
We're clear of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be from the north driveway.
The north driveway, yes.
House edge of the north driveway.
Right, exactly. That's the way I, yeah.
Because there's already a new sidewalk that goes alongside the school on Pleasant End that cuts up onto Elm. So that would, that would like totally wrap around the school and create a safe sidewalk if we, even with cutting off that end section there.
And so the guardrail, I'm guessing, begins where it's wooded?
Um, yeah, where, where there's a curve in the road to the south.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean essentially just cutting off Pleasant Street and Mechanic Street.
Correct.
I don't see an issue with that.
Okay.
Depending on what the receiving facility is on the other side.
Right.
So on the northern side of the northern drive for the school.
And now, in terms of next steps for a grant-funded project, once we have decided upon a scope or length of the sidewalk, would it then be up to us to draft a request for bids and describing the project elements in a way that meet V-Trans specs? Is that the next step you would have in mind, or?
Because this is a small-scale project.
Yeah.
Handle a little differently than a normal project.
Good.
So town handles procurement, design, management, all of that. Really, the only thing we're concerned with is making sure that it's, follows all the guidelines that we have to follow as V-Trans.
Can you highlight some of those guidelines so that we don't run amiss of them?
I can list them, actually.
Sure.
WUTCD.
That's signage.
Yep. ADA.
And ADA will determine width of the sidewalk, right?
Yeah, four feet minimum. You can be as narrow as four feet, but you have to have early point every 200 feet. That's five feet wide.
Okay.
At a minimum.
Every 200 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The V-Trans by PED manual and then ASHTO, which shouldn't be an issue.
What is ASHTO?
It's the engineering.
Okay.
God, I forgot exactly what it stands for.
Okay. And along the way, you're available to consult with our request for bids and that kind of thing?
Yep.
So to make sure we're playing by V-Trans rules.
Yeah, and so because it's on Route 7, all the plans will have to be reviewed by V-Trans permitting to get an access permit to work.
That's a Form 1111?
Yep.
Okay.
And then for submitting it to them, we would want to just look at it to make sure that we're not sending something to permitting that we know was not.
That's Teresa Gilman?
I think she's in this area.
Yeah, she is.
There's the two of them.
Okay. Good. I know, I know, for example, you had a suggestion, Joe, about painting the road instead of sidewalking. Did you run that by them?
Right. Somewhere, I travel around delivering lumber, do quite a bit of New England, and somewhere I have seen where they have the right-hand white line, just inside that, they had a red line to keep people from getting over where they didn't belong. Just like I have been noticing in the town of Woodstock, I think their crosswalks are painted blue. The town of Ludlow, their crosswalks are painted red. I'm quite impressed with that paint scheme. It stands out good. Now, does the state get involved in doing that work?
No. So to my knowledge, the only formally approved color for crosswalk is white. On Route 7, where you have a curved sidewalk, I know it's not really existent in the current state, but where you have that, you wouldn't have enough shoulder length to provide a safe pathway for pedestrians unless you remove the sidewalk entirely and then allow, but being a state route, I would discourage that, just not having any sort of vertical or horizontal separation.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so the state of Vermont, and I don't know how many years ago this is, but has given the town approximately, and I didn't measure it exactly, but there's roughly 250 feet of granite curbing that we have sitting down at our transfer station. My question is, does the state have any more of that that they could give us? I mean, you'd be looking to do the section we're talking, you'd be looking at probably another 500 feet. And would it be possible for us to lay that granite curbing and then repave the sidewalk behind it?
So in terms of providing the curbing, you'd have to talk to the district to see if they have any surplus, but I would guess not, just knowing the current situation, what the districts are going through, but guess it doesn't hurt to call them. And then you could absolutely use that curb and put sidewalk behind it, if that was the.
The question is not putting sidewalk behind it.
I believe would save us a lot of money and can save the state money, too, if that, you know, if we were able to do something like that.
Hey, Dave, do you mean, do you mean putting sidewalk behind that curb or just having the curb as a separation with no sidewalk behind it?
Just the pavement.
Well, I think you'd have, I think you probably would have to repave the sidewalk behind it. What you'd end up doing, you'd have to cut it, lay the curbing in, and then you'd have to run pavement on the roadside to seal that up and then just repave the sidewalk behind it. And then you'd have a nice raised
You'd end up with this.
Sidewalk. And it certainly is, looking at the bids I've seen, you know, you're looking, what, $25, $26 a linear foot for pavement versus $130 for cement, there's a huge savings there.
So, to be clear, the backside of the curb on the sidewalk side would have to be flushed with the curb?
Correct. That's why I'm saying we would have to pave it, yeah.
At the top.
Yeah. Yeah, it would have, the sidewalk would want to be flushed with the top of the curb.
Otherwise you'd have something sticking up.
Yeah, otherwise that's.
But that, with that curb there, it would give us that barrier we need to stop people from driving on the sidewalk.
Sure.
Yeah. And I know in the application, it was proposed with concrete curb with paving, paved sidewalk behind it.
Right, with asphalt, yeah. That was the original proposal.
Yep.
Changes could be made if we found adequate amounts of granite.
Yeah, I mean materials.
That'd probably be preferable, actually. Granite's preferable, just much more expensive.
Correct. Yeah, you're not married to any sort of materials at this point. I know that the agency does prefer granite curbs, but I mean, concrete curbs are more costly.
Let me ask you this, a question about timing. Assuming the town is diligent in moving forward, first to determining our scope and materials, second to going out to bid and all that and working with V-Trans, do you think it's reasonable to expect that we would be ready to move forward with construction by the time of the next school break next summer?
Yes.
Okay.
With a small scale. If this was a normal project, probably not.
Okay.
But with a small-scale project where you guys are in the driver's seat.
Okay. Good.
My question. The state, this is a state highway, Route 7. The state maintains it. Anything that's done to it has to meet state specs.
Yep.
Why doesn't the state take charge of this and do this project? Why is it falling back onto the town?
I don't know, I can't speak to what the roadway projects are.
Is that a valid question?
I mean, I'm sure that they have a way to evaluate that. That's not my area of expertise.
In the letter?
I know that the state doesn't do sidewalks. They would do roadway, but.
But as a part of the reconstruction, sidewalk is part of the network.
Right.
And the governor's office sent us a letter explaining that because this is going to see reconstruction in 2026 or 2028, they didn't want to put money into a sidewalk that would then be torn up.
Right.
Our, our concern is the safety between now and when that project is happening. So that's why I applied for this grant with the governor's office's support.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. It seems to me that this is the state's obligation, not the Pittsburgh Select Board and the Pittsburgh Highway Department and the Pittsburgh taxpayers. Could you come up with an answer for me on that?
Those decisions are made way above me, Kentucky, then.
But maybe you could, is it possible for you to check that out?
I mean, I can ask, but it sounds like John's already discussed that.
Which probably can address it too.
That we, I don't know how they prioritize that. That's, uh, you'd be better off talking to, you know, either the secretary or somebody along those lines.
John, didn't you get a letter from Brian Sanderson here, or I think I saw the email a month or less ago?
Yep.
That clearly stated that sidewalks were the purview of the town, period?
I don't recall the email saying that. I know that we've always been told that the state would replace the sidewalks as part of the reconstruction project. I also recall him offering to help once we have a better vision of what our project is in terms of helping us identify what the likely cost would be. I'm sorry, I can't do more for you.
Well, I think, I, I think if you look back through, I think you will find there was a letter or an email from him that clearly stated that if sidewalks were the town's responsibility. I may be, I may not be right, but I think I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a chance he was saying that in regards to maintenance, in terms of the plowing and that sort of stuff?
That certainly has been the town's responsibility.
Because that's pretty black and white.
Right. Maybe that's what it was meaning.
I know, I know, but.
Maybe, I, I don't know, I took it the other way, but, um, I will find it before the next meeting.
Or I can, I certainly can.
I know Butch went through hoops and rings to even get this grant that we got, I believe.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is a couple of years old, at least now, maybe more, actually more than that. And this grant, can you hear me, Dave?
If you speak a little louder, yep.
Yell at him. This, this grant was given to the town as a, as a matching grant back then to assist the sidewalk in his area as a, as a safety issue for young folks walking on the sidewalk around the schools. Kind of as a, as a, as a Band-Aid to get you to 2028, the intended construction date of the reconstruction of the highway. And I, that's, that's kind of the genesis of the whole thing, actually, it was more than three years ago, because Governor Shulman was in office at the time.
Didn't we have, we had a senator and the whole legislative body was here.
Senators with us, we had representatives, we had.
Secretary.
Secretary of Transportation came and locked the sidewalks the same day.
Kevin Marshall.
Yep.
Kevin Marshall was there.
That's when this all started.
We had a group, and this is, this was their solution, that they would, they would give you $100,000 in a matching grant.
Yep.
To, to this work, and that's, that's kind of the genesis of this, where we are today. At the time, it was determined that the state would not put any money into the sidewalks until, until the construction, road reconstruction.
Back to this issue of MUTCD, the signage. We've been advised by residents, being very helpful, that it's against the law to pass on the right on Route 7 on top of a curb, on top of a curb or sidewalk. And we've suggested to V-Trans that they put some signage up since it's their road, their right-of-way. But do you think that we could incorporate such signage in our sidewalk project as part of the?
Potentially. You would, first of all, need to make sure that there is signage that is MUTCD compliant. You would need to talk to the sign engineer in the area.
Who would that be, do you know?
I don't know the individual.
We can find it.
Yeah.
Okay. Didn't know there was one.
Yeah, they're, they're regionally separated.
Okay.
E and D Gooz would probably be your best to contact, just to find out who the individual is for this area.
Okay.
But in my experience, to be honest, if you're going to curb in that area where that's frequently.
Shouldn't be a problem.
That generally is the best deterrent.
Okay.
It makes people uncomfortable, so.
Yep.
Well, they're, going along with the signage, is there any, in the interim, before we figure this whole thing out, is there any electronic monitoring that could be done to take pictures of people and their license plate as they drive on the sidewalk? If we were to put up a sign, you know, clearly stating that you can't pass on the right, is there any electronic stuff available to us that could be set up there that would take pictures so that we could start to prosecute some of these people that are doing it?
If they're.
Because our police force isn't big enough to be there all the time. That's, that's part of the problem. But is there any other way for us to enforce it, is what I'm asking?
Not through V-Trans. I mean, you, you would have to run that through state police to see what they have, and chances are they're, they're going to put that on the town to monitor and provide.
Yeah.
You know, they, they may have equipment, but they're just, they wouldn't monitor the equipment themselves, I don't believe, but V-Trans doesn't.
But there might be equipment available to do it, is what you're saying.
There might be, I don't have no idea.
Our police chief is here, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know.
You can check.
I mean, that might be, I mean, like Bear did send in a letter, once you start prosecuting people, you can start cutting down on some of that until we get this, you know, until we get a physical curb there to stop people.
Well, that's just like the stop sign in the firehouse. You can prosecute them all day long, but they're still going to run that stop sign, no matter how many tickets you give or prosecute it. That's not the way to cure it, I don't think. It might help, but I doubt it.
I wonder if monitors for that spot might catch pedestrians walking by and any number of other people who are appropriately on the sidewalk. Just a possibility, I don't know.
Something to look into.
One thing you could talk to the district about, just to make sure that they're okay with it, because it's pretty non-invasive in the short term, would be to do some sort of cones or something that would narrow the shoulder, so they're not going, they would have to go through cones. It's pretty passive.
Speed spikes.
It's pretty passive, but you would want to get their approval for doing it.
Sure, sure, sure.
Because it's their right-of-way.
Good idea. Sometimes these things disappear, honestly.
And I know you're going to say no to this, but let me throw this out. We've got, I don't know how many hundreds or thousands of guardrail posts sitting down at our transfer station too. Would we be allowed to, every 10 feet, put in a guardrail post along there?
No.
Oh, boy.
No.
I'm not talking a full guardrail, I'm just talking the posts with like a reflector on them.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's the district's decision, but I'm going to guess you're going to get a hard no from them.
I think the liability would be terrible.
Exactly, because it'd be inside the clear zone.
Yep.
Okay.
We don't want to make the situation this bad worse.
Well, this is the time to explore.
It was, oh, yeah, it would work.
This is the time to explore any and all ideas while we've got Derek here.
Yep. Any others?
I don't think so.
If not, we think you should come.
Well, there's also one other thing in my conversation with Wilk. Can I apologize to the board? I know I told you I would have a longer conversation with him, and, uh, we just haven't been able to connect. There was an extruded curb, I believe he called it, that could be put down, that glues to the asphalt. Do you know anything about that?
Uh, we haven't seen that. Uh, I would have to see a cut sheet and details of that before we could move forward on anything like that.
Okay, 'cause he, he seemed to think they had used it and run it in different places, so, but it, it may have been on, you know, city streets rather than along, you know, state road.
What's the, what's the material, Dave?
Okay.
What's the material, Dave?
There's another, there's something else for us to look into.
Well, Dave, what material is extruded? Do you, do you know?
I don't know, we didn't get into it that much. He just said that the city of Rowland had used this extruded stuff, that it glued itself right to the existing pavement, and then you just build the sidewalk behind it.
Tell me that extruded stuff, I'm familiar with asphalt.
He seemed to think it was fairly cost-effective and fairly easy to do, from what, what I gather. If I had been able to get back in hold of him, he was going to put me in charge or in touch with the, the Public Works guy down in Rowland to talk to him about it, to see how it was holding up to the snowplows and that kind of stuff.
I think, I think.
Again, I apologize, I just, I haven't been able to get hold of him when I've had time, and he's called me, we just haven't been able to connect.
I think the reason we went to Wilk in the first place was that V-Trans may have mentioned that technology to me, and I think that extrusion is asphalt.
It's asphalt.
Which we've learned from V-Trans, they can't guarantee their plow drivers won't chew it up pretty darn quick. But maybe that's.
No, and if you, if you look down by the guardrails, John?
Yep.
The curb down by that guardrail is asphalt, and I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of years that's been there, and it's still there.
Okay, Dave, okay, Dave, but that, that's what I was told by V-Trans, Secretary of Transportation. They told me that their plow drivers, since they're not always as familiar with every nook and cranny of the town's section of Route 7 as we residents are, that they would probably bang in that, bang into that and tear it up pretty quickly. But that, that's just what they told me.
Yep, no, but again, and I don't know if this extruded stuff is, is asphalt or if it, I gathered it was something else.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? If not, we'll.
It's been very educational, Derek, and we appreciate you coming out and facing the firing squad.
I know, thank you.
Not too bad, I don't think. Yeah. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, moving along. Recap of Pittsburgh Day Celebration.
Chief, in order to avoid further gaps in time, do you want to tell me whether you've come to a decision on the scope of the sidewalk, or is there another conversation for it?
No, no, I think we're pretty much in agreement, we're moving forward.
And especially, and that's what we're.
I'm talking about the scope. Do you want, do you like the idea that Dave and Alicia has put together?
Yeah, I like that.
Put together?
From the, from the north.
The north driveway of the school.
I think, I think the cutoff, you can't go.
Or, or to the school property line.
You can't go to the property line, because you'd be having a sidewalk that went like this.
Yeah, go to the school property.
I think you might have to go to Pleasant Street.
And then they would.
To the corner of Pleasant Street.
Anchor it down.
To the school.
Yeah, because you have the handicapped access right there to that, that part of the sidewalk.
So we're talking about a scope, let me see if I understand you.
Then add another 30 feet.
The corner of Pleasant Street down to the guardrail?
Yes. And leave, leave off the Pleasant Mechanic.
Because the state already put in the handicapped cement to the sidewalk.
And as Alicia points out, that's the connecting point with the Pleasant Street sidewalk.
Right, so that's where it probably should start.
Okay.
Yeah, and that doesn't add a whole heck of a lot.
Does that agree, does that agree with your understanding, Dave?
Do you understand what we're saying?
You're talking, that's, uh, you've got the north driveway of the school, you're talking from there down to that next street.
Yes.
You're talking, getting that on.
Yep, right, to where they.
Yeah, that's another, I don't have the figures here with me, but that, yeah, that's another, so you're, you're maybe, at the most, you're up to 800 feet of actual sidewalk.
Yeah, something like that, maybe. It's not going to add an awful lot to it.
And I think that helps with.
No, well, somewhere between, uh, I think it's under 100 feet, somewhere between 60 and 100 feet there.
And I think that's, that would satisfy V-Trans' concern that we don't have a sidewalk to nowhere.
Right. Because that would go right down to where they've already fixed the, the beginning of the sidewalk.
Right.
Are you talking about Lori Greeno's house?
No.
No. No, where, where.
Tremville, Plumencola.
Well, because in front of Lori Greeno's house, there's a section of fairly new sidewalk.
Yeah, we're not talking about doing that. We thought it was stopping, that's the section where they built, street to street.
The only numbers that I do have on me are that from the north driveway at the school, it was another 293 feet to Mechanic.
To Mechanic, right.
That's quite a ways from that.
Yeah, so, but I don't know what the numbers are.
I think you're going to have to do it, because I don't think the state's going to let us split that in half.
Just a couple of questions.
Go ahead, please.
The first is, what are the conditions at the beginning of the guardrail that this new sidewalk could be matching into?
Well, there is an existing curb there.
Yeah.
Um, it's not in great shape, but it definitely is a delineation between the road and the sidewalk.
In atrocious shape, to be honest.
Yeah, terrible shape.
But it is a curb. There is some curb there.
Uh, and then the second one is, the application was for about 1,300 feet of sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you remove 290, whatever, feet off that, you're still about 1,000 feet. I hear a number, 800, so I just wanted.
Yeah, well, I don't think, in our earlier estimate, we subtracted for driveways, for example, so I think we're getting closer to the bone at 800.
Yeah, because actually, from the guardrail all the way to Mechanic was 1,000 feet, with taking out roadways and, and driveways and such.
Okay, so, roadways, you, you would just put in a mowing surface of some kind, where you don't have to pave those drives. You'd need to look at what is paved versus not paved, because, um, on any agency projects that we do, or normal local projects, you have to continue, this is an FHWA guidance, you have to continue the sidewalk material through the drive.
Okay.
Uh, if you don't, you have to put the mowing surface.
But it's less material.
That would be just paving across the driveway.
Which I think is the way you need to do it anyways.
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, but, you know, I just don't, I, I heard the numbers for instance, I didn't want to send it up to you, go back to the.
Yeah. The, the length of this whole thing, there must be a couple hundred feet of breaks, such as in front of Eaton Hall and the, the school driveways.
Yeah, that's what we took out for.
Between all the driveways and, you know, in front of the Historical Society and all that, there's, you know, you take out close to 300 feet of.
Curbing.
Certainly curbing. I mean, I understand you, if you're paving, you'd want to go right down through, but you obviously don't need curbing where the driveways and the parking lots and stuff.
Of course not, no. You've got to leave them driveways open, ramp them such that they can get in and out, all of them. And that, that does add up to quite a lot of footage, that there wouldn't be any curbing.
Now, V-Trans might want to see a motion to this effect, that you're all on board with this, or that, that the majority's on board with a change in scope. If somebody's willing to make it, I can work with Kelly, make sure it comes out right.
Yeah.
To reduce the scope, to eliminate anything north of the Pleasant Street intersection.
That would be the way to crack.
And to reduce and eliminate curbing, obviously, on driveways.
Well, there's no curbing on driveways anyway.
So, okay, okay, that's fair enough. I'm just talking about the original scope versus the new scope.
Right, because we are just going.
Original scope, didn't they, didn't they include, didn't they include curbing on driveway?
All right.
We did just originally have 1393, and it's 1,000. So we are losing, you know, so I think just making sure that that's in there.
Okay.
So you're going from 1393 feet to 1,000?
I'm not sure I'm ready to sign off on that. I'm not sure I'm ready to sign off on that.
I think we want to say it where the project starts at Pleasant Street and ends at-
At the guardrail.
At the guardrail. That's-
Those disgusting numbers, we can just do that.
Don't be putting in your footage, because we don't know the footage.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I would agree with that, Tom.
Okay.
Our scope of the project would be from Pleasant Street to the guardrails on the south end.
Yeah, so I make that motion.
Include all the driveways and everything that needs to be done per the state.
Well, is that your motion?
Yep, make that motion.
That's your motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? We all understand the motion, it's from Pleasant Street to the guardrail. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimous.
Okay. Thanks, Derek. We'll follow up with you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, a recap.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we want to get to the Randy issues.
Yeah, maybe. Is he still there? He is still there.
If you'd like, just mention as a possibility.
Yeah, we can wait on that.
No, no.
Huh?
So, Randy-
He's been here all day.
You're here with a proposal on the trail runs and compensation?
One thing, before we get off the sidewalk thing.
Okay.
John, are you going to check with the state and just see if they do have any?
Yes, I certainly will.
Or if they have torn out that we could get hold of?
Do you know how we happen to get the 250 feet that you say we have?
Do I know how?
Yeah.
Does that come from the project?
Uh, I don't know how. They evidently, the state came to, and I don't know if it was when Sean, I'm assuming it was when Sean was there, looking at how long it looks like it's been there.
Okay.
And the state just came and said, hey, we got this stuff, we've got these guardrail posts, and there were also some grater blades that they were using.
Okay.
Because if you'll notice, we haven't had to buy any grater blades for a while, that's because they gave us a bunch of them.
I do remember the grater blades.
So, it was just a bunch of them showed up. I don't know, you know, whether it was the granite curb theory, I don't know how it showed up, but it just did. Chad probably could tell you, you know, how we ended up with it.
Yep.
David, it's been my experience that any curbing has to be fit to the job. If that doesn't fit the job, it's going to cost you more to rework it than it's worth.
But it doesn't mean I can't ask V-Trans at all.
No, I know, let's check it out.
You mean you can't ask?
Right.
I mean, yeah, I don't know.
We'll do.
I, I don't know. That's all stuff we should look into.
Yep.
I think.
Yep.
Yep.
I've got several things that I'll be following up with and advising you about, and that's one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
One other thing comes to my mind, where we're going to do this, is it a good idea to figure out where the pictures of residents are coming from to pay for it?
Oh, well, we had that discussion at the last meeting, I believe.
We have the bridge fund and the highway capital fund that we can take out.
And hopefully, with a shorter scope, we'll be doing some savings, so we won't have to dig into our pockets so much.
Hopefully, it's not going to cost as much as originally planned.
Right, that's the idea.
That is the hope.
And we had, we had about half of it that we knew about for sure, and the other half was what was-
Right. We were going to look to the village fund and the highway fund to each contribute 25 of the 100 that we needed.
We were looking for the other 50, and that's what we cut, so...
The bridge fund.
And then we said the bridge fund, we'd take it on.
The bridge fund is healthy at the moment.
It's healthy, so that's what it's going for.
The bridge fund has money in it, I know that.
Okay, Randy, you're up.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Recreation Committee to ask for a $300 stipend for Kelly Conantin, who runs our trail run. Our trail run's four years old now. You see the argorilla in the hallway there, and each year, except this last year, it's been growing bigger and bigger. Kelly's done a lot of great things, put some of the money. And the Fract Committee felt like $300 stipend starting next year would be a good way to start. The first year, they gave 1165 to the water fountain at the Rad. In '17, they had 966 left over that's going to go towards the Holy Lifeguard Shelter that I'm going to hopefully touch you with after. And $3,155 from the '18 trail run, and $2,875 from last year, so 2019.
And just to be clear, she approached the committee and suggested that she would appreciate some monetary-
Some sort of, without any number.
Number, yeah.
Yeah, having run that the last four years, she does a lot, she does a lot of work to put it together.
That's why they're called volunteers.
She certainly uses her marketing skills.
I think Dave, wait, John, I think Dave.
Oh.
Oh, good call.
Like, who's calling?
I know.
Dave, is that you?
Yeah, Alicia cut me off.
She does.
I'm not even there today.
She wants to apologize profusely.
Yeah, okay.
I thought you were awful quiet.
So, how much, did you get any of Randy's speech here?
I'm there.
David, did you hear any of Randy's remarks?
I heard some of it.
Okay.
And we're talking, so this would be, she would be paid in what, the 2021 budget or the 1920 budget?
It's got to be next year's budget.
In other words, when does she get paid? When is he looking to get the $300?
It would be next April, April 2020.
Next April, so it's going to be in the current budget that we've already approved?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, that's all, okay.
And it'd be taken out of revenue from the trail run.
And Randy's listed the last four years, what the revenues have been from the trail run, starting at $1,100, then 966, then 3,155, then 2,875 for the most recent one.
Okay, okay.
My only question, are we setting a precedence on something new that we've never done? And are we opening the door for a lot more things that people do volunteer-wise?
I guess that's a thought.
If you do it, you have to pay every volunteer that asks for it.
You know, it's not that I'm against doing it, but I think you-
No, I'm going to hear what you're saying, I just-
You have to be careful that you're not setting a precedent here. There's many volunteers in town that do lots of things that don't get paid for, and aren't they going to be asking?
I guess the question would be, who is she willing to be re-characterized as a contractor versus a volunteer?
Yeah, I mean, to me, volunteerism is volunteerism.
She does provide professional-type services toward this.
She does.
That way, if she submits a bill, to me, that's something different than a volunteer.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the, if that's the kind of hang-up, is the volunteer versus contract out or whatever. But she does, she does a lot of work, I think she-
I'm not saying she shouldn't, but I mean, you're opening the door. Everything this board does has to be careful how we do it, because you opened the door and-
Well, a reclassification, would that incur any other liabilities?
Have to find out.
Have to find out, yeah. I mean, that's a good question.
Just adds to your same question you're in.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing, I guess the thing, and I, I'm sure she's worth it, and I'm not saying she shouldn't be paid, all these are valid questions. The other thing that I think if these departments are going to, you know, be it change somebody's pay or do this, when they come to us with their budget, that needs to be included. I have a little problem with it being added on after the fact.
Yep.
I mean, if Randy presents a budget to this board here in September, October, whenever we do that kind of stuff, and he decides he wants to do it, that is when it should be presented, not random nilly-willy. That way, we can make the decision then and put the money in there. If that makes, what I'm trying to say makes any sense.
Yeah.
It does.
And the taxpayers could see at that town meeting.
Well, we could also check into the fact whether it brings on any other responsibilities, whether, I mean, I have no problem that she earns it, because I'm sure she does.
And you're not talking about putting her on payroll, you're talking about an independent contractor who would submit an invoice.
Submit an invoice.
So, I don't know that there's any liability associated with that.
I wouldn't think so. To me, that's kind of the way to-
Hopefully, there wouldn't be any other-
Well, yeah, it would be the same thing. She submits an invoice, and we're not paying a volunteer, we're paying an actual invoice for her time and service or whatever she's doing.
Because work is not covered up.
I think you're opening the door for other organizations, people saying, hey, I volunteer, I owe $500 this year for what I did. You know. There's lots of things that people do and volunteer in this town and spend a lot of time, but I don't know what that-
I'm looking at one.
Well, that I-
I know, but that's a good example. It's a good example.
Yeah. So, I just think it might open a can of worms.
Okay. I can see that.
I'm over table.
Let's, let's-
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Look into it and see what happens and maybe-
Is there any kind of instruction you want me to follow up on in terms of researching it? Or do we want to express to Kelly that we'd prefer this be a matter of budgetary discipline?
Yeah, I think it's a matter of-
Dealt with in the fall.
Yeah. And I'll table it until Dave's back, and we can discuss it again and see where we stand. If he's got money in his budget, he wants to submit a bill, and he doesn't go over budget, I guess I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
But in the future, it should be done at budget time.
But I think Randy ought to be free to advise her that nobody had anything but positive things to say about her and her big contribution to town.
Oh, no, yeah. No, I'm not against her being paid, I just-
No, no, none of us are.
I don't like the fact that somebody, you know, Randy's got a budget of $10,000, and now all of a sudden, he wants another $300 out of the blue. No, that 300 should have been in his budget as a line item, so we knew it was coming. That's-
Or Dave, there may be a spot in his budget. Budgets are budgets, they're not set in stone. He may have a line item where he can take $300 out and not put them over budget, too. So, that's a possibility.
And as you'll hear at the budget workshop, budgets are plans.
Right.
Plans can change, and they don't always have to be at the beginning of the next budget cycle.
Exactly.
But, you know, I understand where you're coming from.
You know, I personally don't have a problem if she submitted a bill this year, and there's money in there, doesn't put them over, okay, so you pay the bill. And hoping that's a way to get around this problem where we don't open a can of worms. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but that's the way I feel.
But I guess, going on that route, what is to stop anybody else from doing the same thing?
Well, I think you have to look at each situation. And we know what this is and what she's done and what the money she's brought in. I think each time somebody does something, you need to look at it, and it bears its own merit.
Yeah.
That's where we won't be opening up, I don't think, this can of worms where we might.
John, let's look at Randy's budget, see where we stand this year.
Yeah. I think you're-
We're very, obviously, very early and early at it. If you're talking about her asking for this in April, by then, the budget numbers will look a lot more firm.
Yeah, and so we should, we should know by then. So, let's table it, let's table it till April.
Table it till April. We'll encourage Randy to make a proposal to incorporate a line item for the future budgets, and we'll see how we're doing in April, telling her that we certainly hope we can accommodate her, but we can't commit.
We just can't commit at this point.
Or any investigation as to what else might come from.
I'd be happy to check with VLCT on their opinion about it. Sure, yeah.
Go ahead, Randy.
Talk about the lifeguard permanent shelter that the Fract Committee would like to start. Mr. Havasak asked me to come to the select board, so I could, we could, how could start the permanent process.
Tell us why we need this project and what we're hoping to accomplish, if you will.
Safety of the lifeguards, give them shady spots, a day even like today when it was raining and overcast, and they had swimmers down there when it wasn't, you know, covering lightning, it would have been a good spot today. Right now, we don't have a dedicated shaded area. They moved their picnic table around the side of the pool next to a tree, and rotated up to that side.
And they can't rely on the pavilion because that's too far for-
It's too far away, yeah, it's too far away.
We've tried pop-up tents in over the years.
Damn it, boy.
For that kind of safety, you know.
It's not permanent.
Do you have any plans, Randy?
Yes, we do. After, I can pass them out.
I can share this one if you want. Randy's given me this mock-up today of a 12 by 14 kind of shed.
One shelter that you're doing? And this would be on, would be on the, by the diving board, so?
On the south end of the pond, in between the-
Between the fence and the pond?
Yeah, actually, the fence would go, you'll see, the fence goes up through it. That way, you know, there will be entrance, right, a new entrance, a single entrance, which our lifeguard say will be much easier to keep track of every single one and go through into the swim area. Right now, we have two ones a handicap. We build approximately $3,800 to build it.
How much?
$3,800. And I can show you a couple of different quotes and why we think that.
How do you propose to pay for this?
With the money that the trail run has received.
So, you've got the money, you've got the money in place, then?
Right now, we have, say, 779, yeah, 7,700.9. All trail running, except 733, and that's the, the lifeguards had their own fundraiser last summer, and that's what they raised.
Do you expect to have any money in your budget left over after, in that budget line item, at the end of the year?
Yeah. Say, again?
Do you expect, and that line item that you're running is through, you expect to have money in the budget for that, left over? Again, at the end of this fiscal year, are you going to have any money left in that line item?
In this, in the 7,000?
Well, depending on how much we use.
Beyond the 3,800, is there going to be money for a foundation of some kind? You're talking about concrete, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that includes concrete.
That includes concrete?
Well-
That's total cost?
Let me make, let me... Plus $1,000 for concrete.
$5,000.
So, it looks like you got the money left.
So, Tom, how much money does he have towards that 3,800? I haven't been able to figure it out.
In his account right now, there's about $7,029 that he has, with $1,000 for the foundation, and it was 3,800 for the actual structure.
So, five grand.
So, $5,000.
Building.
Yeah, so 5,000 total probably covers the project.
And he's got over 7,000 in an account set aside for it?
Yep.
Yes, yeah, 7,700. So, he's got plenty of money.
Okay.
So, I guess we just need a motion to-
Well, I don't even know if we need a motion. He's just basically updating us that he wants to go get his permit.
Permits.
Oh, yeah.
So, whatever, I mean-
Although, maybe if you're feeling like you'd like to give it, feel free. Give permission to-
What are you proposing to build with?
Yeah, next spring.
Would you like to start at this moment?
Just fall doing the foundation.
As much as we can, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be ready for next season.
Great.
Yeah. So, do we need to do it now? I would say let's get it done with.
Yeah, me with me.
I'll make a motion.
Not to exceed $5,000.
To exceed $5,000.
You got a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
We'll use that other money towards other ranking improvements. We'll use that other money towards other improvements.
So-
We used three hundred dollars after paying-
So the motion is to not exceed five thousand dollars, if that's what I heard?
Yes, for this lifeguard shelter. I have a motion, but I don't have a second.
Can somebody second it?
Not yet.
I'll second it.
Joe seconded it, Joe just seconded it. So the motion's on the floor, been seconded. Any further discussion on the lifeguard shelter, not to exceed five thousand dollars? If none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes, haves, and anes.
Congratulations. You're in business.
Build your shelter.
What the hell kind of permits you've got to go through?
Oh, you have a building permit?
A building permit.
Yeah.
That's bigger than a hundred and fifty square feet.
Oh, yeah?
Jesus. I tell you.
But the good news is, the good news is they both share the same office.
It should be okay. It should be all right.
Randy, what's the permit going to cost us? What's the permit going to cost us?
And can I, can I step back for just a second, going back to the Kelly Conaughey thing?
Yeah.
Maybe something that we need to think about is aboard, if we're going to start down this road, is whether it's a written policy or an unwritten policy. But something that, that guides us when we decide to do this kind of stuff, like whether we decide, you know, if somebody is bringing in, you know, three or four thousand dollars worth of revenue and we feel they should get- Let's say somebody's bringing, say she's bringing in three thousand dollars and, and we feel she should get ten percent of it. So, you know, say the first year she brings in a thousand, so she would get a hundred. You know, by year four, she brings in three thousand, she gets three hundred, but maybe set the limit at three hundred.
I'm not-
Just so we have some kind of a guideline as these things come up, so we don't do different things with different people and get ourselves in trouble.
I think that's a very good impulse. However, the idea of giving anyone a percentage of revenue generated will turn off a lot of people, I'm sure.
Oh, I think so. It sure will.
Will turn out what?
Will turn off a lot of people. I know Tom and Hank have joked about getting a percentage of tax receipts. But that's, that's, but that's intended, that's intended to torque people on.
I want my ten percent to go to twelve percent next year, I'm going to quit, so there you go.
This is not true, taxpayers.
See ya, see ya, yeah, I know.
Why do you think I'm on this board?
I think, I don't think it's changed in how many years, so. So, yeah, that's why I said, Dave, we don't want to start a can of worms. And that's what I'm afraid we're going to do here, be very careful.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So I don't think we should pay any volunteers myself, if you want to volunteer for a position. But my own personal, I've been volunteering this town for almost sixty years, so I don't have a lot of money, so. Does that tell you anything? That's how I feel, that's okay.
Yep, thank you for the board.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
We appreciate it.
And Randy, you and I can talk tomorrow about how to express this to Kelly.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, consider a request from landowner seeking Act 250 permit on Von Turkovich. Did you find out anything, John?
I did, I talked, I talked with V-Trans Teresa Gilman, again, this Form 1111 expert. She represents this area. And I told her about our situation and she's familiar with this development. And she told me that whether it's a Pittsburgh application or a Von Turkovich application with Pittsburgh as a co-applicant, yes, Pittsburgh does have to be one of the, one or the other because it's our infrastructure that's being affected. She said that in either scenario, it should be a no-fee permit. So I've emailed Frank and I've said, we've been told it's a no-fee permit, can you withdraw your request?
Okay.
Oh, because that was the whole point of him coming to us, correct?
And I haven't, I haven't heard back from him. Maybe he knows more than Teresa does, but I suspect Teresa knows. She said that based on the number of trips she's aware of being generated by this proposal, it would be a no-fee permit. So let's table it until we have some reason to take it up.
I thought I heard you say that because you're doing county infrastructure, we're going to be a co-applicant.
We have to at least be a co-applicant. The question is whether we want to be the lead applicant.
Let him-
Which Von Turkovich believes would save him twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
But according to Teresa, there is no twenty-five hundred dollars.
We still have to be a co-applicant.
Yes, that's right.
We don't have to be the-
And I expressed to her that the whole point of this discussion is that we don't, we don't want to stop the project, but nor do we wish to endorse it as lead applicant either.
Right.
Okay, so we'll table it. All right, we're going to new business.
Unless you wanted to recap of Pittsburgh Day?
Let's, let's table that till, till our next meeting. Because we don't have a lot of stuff done yet.
Okay, yeah.
We have-
What do we say, the link?
The Pittsburgh Day. Pittsburgh Day. The only thing I will mention on Pittsburgh Day, maybe I should do that now, is I was in touch with Brad Morgan, who was the band director for Satin and Steel, which did not perform for us because of the weather. And they have offered to come back to Pittsburgh this fall sometime during the month of September. We don't have a date yet and he's out of the country till next week. And they will come to Pittsburgh and do another performance for us free of charge.
Nice.
So possibly, we're thinking maybe at the rec area, end of the summer type deal in the middle of September. But, so stay tuned for that, I guess. I just wanted to get that out there. They are going to do that, so that was good. Okay, so now on to new business. Discussion of the Loop School Blue House.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Dave and Alicia had asked some good questions at our last meeting, asking me to research the situation. I was in touch with Jeannie Collins at the RNESU headquarters. She wrote us an email explaining that, yes, as part of the custodian's compensation package, they have entered into a license agree, agreement allowing him to take up residence in the Blue House, which seems to confirm some of the rumors we had heard. And to my mind, unless there's any objection, I think this bears referral to the zoning officer to determine whether there needs to be some sort of action from the zoning office as to a change of use of that building. And secondly, to the lister's office, because they might want to take action to put the Blue House as a revenue generating source onto the tax rolls. So unless there's an objection, that's my plan to do first thing tomorrow morning. But I wanted you to have that additional information and you've received it.
Should we also, I realize this will cost us money, but should we also have the town's attorney look over that agreement?
Be happy to.
And just get his opinion on it? Because to me, it clearly looks like they're using it for a rental property. But maybe this life, I mean, I don't get why they're licensing it and not leasing it.
I will, I will-
I don't know what the difference is.
I imagine that was already a legal opinion.
They said that they had to, had to run that agreement by their lawyer. So they might be trying to anticipate these issues. So I think it makes sense for us to have maybe Gary look at this and give us his thoughts as to whether our plan to send zoning and listers into the fray is premature because there might be some explanation. But I'll be happy to get that for you. But unless I hear something to give us pause, I'd just as soon proceed.
I just think it's also interesting, I'm sorry. I think it's also interesting, there's five adults living there, though? If it's, if it's supposed to be partial payment for the head custodian, why are there four other adults living there rent-free?
Don't know, I'm sure I don't know.
And a pit bull.
And a pit bull.
It was dog friendly, I saw that.
Well, that's, and yeah, I mean, it's, but it's, it's just interesting, I mean, it's on school property, they didn't let anybody in town, like in town know, they didn't let anybody, as a parent, I never heard of it. You know, and it's right there. And I wonder if the other four adults are, have been gone through any kind of, you know, fingerprinting background checks like the custodian would have gone through.
Yeah, I'd like to remind everybody that-
There's another question.
This, this property was paid for by the verdict fund, or it's a select board signed off on-
For the purpose of education.
And education only.
Right.
Purposes. Now it's being changed into something else.
Did, would that have already kind of gone away, though, with the consolidation? Would that have-
I don't know, I think there's a legal question there.
Why?
Quite, I don't know.
I clearly think there's a legal question because you've got this building now, if, if the janitor was living upstairs and they were still using it for a school facility downstairs-
That's a different thing.
You could have an argument that what they are doing is okay, but the fact that it clearly, I mean, in their agreement, they are charging him rent. So it clearly is no longer anything to do with a school, it is clearly a rental property. So I think that completely changes its use. But I think, and that's, that's a layman looking at that contract, maybe there's some legal quirk in there that they can get away with still calling it school property. I don't know. And that's the thing, I think we need to find out before we open a can of worms that we don't want to open.
I also wonder if we need to draw some boundaries between select board jurisdiction and instructions to the town manager versus what trustees' concerns might be with regard to the verdict fund.
Right.
Well, my concern is because this select board voted the money in. So I think the select board has an interest in it.
Can you explain what you mean by voted the money in?
The select board voted in manlessly to spend the money to buy the house. The verdict money paid for that building.
Verdict money paid for, but the select board had to sign off on it.
But we have to sign off.
Who's paying the utility bills at this time of school, or is this person living?
I think the, there's a, there's that rental amount plus oil, I think, is, is part of-
It's like, what, eleven hundred dollars rental fee and then another two hundred for the heat, something.
I think that was it.
It comes up to thirteen hundred dollars. I don't have the thing in front of me, but it, it, there's something like that.
Let me ask you this. Would you like Jeannie Collins?
Another question I have is-
Dave, wait a minute, one at a time, I got two people talking.
I was going to ask, would you like me to invite Jeannie Collins and/or Brenda to address the select board? Maybe there's, to answer more of your questions as they've been coming up.
I was just surprised I didn't answer it when you asked already via email.
Yeah, and that was something-
I mean, we had to have him in person to find out.
I personally think we need to talk to Gary first.
I do too. I think we need our attorney.
We know what we're talking about.
Yeah. Let's instruct the town manager-
Some assumptions here that-
Yeah.
Maybe we, there's a reason we shouldn't make them.
All right, Dave, we'll instruct the town manager to contact the town attorney and get back to us before the next meeting.
On the scrutiny of the license agreement.
On the license agreement.
And were there other topics?
And I, I don't know, I think we need to have a, a meeting of the trustees to, to find out whether trustees want to consult with their attorney.
That makes sense to me.
I think possibly, there may be possibility the trustees should, after all, I think it was about hundreds of amount of thousand dollars to buy that house, if I'm not mistaken.
Can you tell me the timeframe for that roughly? I've been here eleven years.
I think it was a hundred and sixty, sixty-five thousand we paid for that house.
I don't know how long it happened when it happened.
But you didn't, so, but the ownership wasn't given up when, with consolidation? I feel like, I thought all, every school building in our district now, it belongs to the district and not to the individual town.
But if the property is not used for school purposes, it reverts back to the town. That's my understanding, I may be wrong. But it's just like if they don't use this kindergarten building over here for educational purposes, that building and property reverts back to the town. Am I not correct, Coach, on that? I think that's in the law.
Geez, I sure hope so.
I think that's the deal. Of course, the deal we had, they sat right there and lied to us, so I, I don't hold any, any-
That's why, that's why I said the select man happened. The select man beside him is why she's had a, he's going to lose money on it.
Does it clearly state that it must be used for educational purposes? Because clearly, having the janitor live there is not for an educational purpose.
That was the intent when they bought the property, I do believe. That's why we need to have our attorney check into it. And I think we probably will call a trustees' meeting here very shortly and see what the trustees want to do.
I get you, and so I know what I'm going to be doing with the attorney. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
So that kind of clears that up, I guess, hopefully.
Okay, one other question I have along these lines.
Go ahead.
The school is on town water and sewer, I presume?
Yes.
Yes.
How are they built?
They are being built, I think, individually for the house.
Has a certain number of ERUs.
I'm not necessarily concerned about the how.
Okay.
What, you know, the reason I'm asking this is what, a woman who is a selectman or select person in Proctor is also the representative down at Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We had a meeting last night and I was talking with her and what has happened in Proctor is because of this Act 46 thing, the school is no longer property of the town. So it becomes its own entity. And I, and my question is, what they were doing in Proctor was because they were charging themselves, they were giving them-
A break.
Basically giving them a deal on water and sewer? Are we doing that? Because there's evidently some formula that is supposed to be used on a building like that now to calculate the water and sewer. So I guess my question is, if, if we were giving them a deal before, probably we shouldn't be now and we need to look into that.
It's certainly not been the intent to give quote "a deal" unquote to the school district. However, given now that you have a separate residential unit, it might behoove us to install a meter there and build that separately from the way we build the school, which is based on multiple ERUs, based on a discussion that we had with our engineers when we set the ERUs years ago.
John, it's my understanding that the school pays twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year for water, which is not, not a deal for, for them at all.
Just loads up twelve thousand?
Yes, and we got, that was what we came through with our agreement with the state on the, on the-
Well, that was, that was, that was the allocation payment for usage of the sewer. Oh, I'm sorry, that was the police academy.
No, 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 no. The police academy was a lot more than that. The police academy gave us a comparison. They were paying, they were paying more than the school, but the school was paying an adequate amount.
I could certainly pull the billings of the school and give you a more-
Let's check that out for, that's-
A statement.
That's in my memory.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm asking is look into it.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, so are we done on the Blue House? Any further comments? Okay. Reveal the proposal, the transfer station shed roof project.
Mr. Chairman, we have, as I've told you at the last meeting, one proposal already from a Rutland contractor called Vermont Roofing, I think. We had been told by Chuckie Charbonneau that he would be submitting a proposal. In fact, he followed up saying he was about to do it in a couple of days and hasn't. I've called him two or three times, I've told him today that I would try to table this for only two weeks to give him one final opportunity to propose. Because I would like to hear a proposal from a local contractor, if possible.
So we've only gotten the one so far?
So far, I'd like to see two bits myself.
Yeah, so if you're agreeable, we'll be-
Four or three, it'd be nice.
We'll table it, yeah.
You still on there, Dave?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would certainly like to see more than one bit, but I think we have to-
At some point, yeah.
Clear, this is the absolute final date, too.
And I did, I did tell that to Chuckie that we'd put it off two weeks, or I'd tried to, and we hope to see it by then.
All right, so, all right, that's what we'll do. Okay, consider the fire warden's request to amend the burning ordinance.
We missed the, oh, the error in admission, we can catch the later one.
That's, I said, I told you to go do that later.
I crossed off, I crossed off the second one.
Give me on that one. See, mine crossed off.
So we have, we have been approached by Bradley Keith, our fire warden, who has had maybe some concern about the rigidity of the burn ordinance when it relates to areas in the periphery of the village with lots of wide open space available. He'd like the opportunity to allow burning beyond the one week in May and the other week in October that we typically do. And he has, points out as an example, the Randall Park area where there's been some big cutting down. And he thinks there's no risk to public safety for him to be approving something like that. So if you're agreeable to trying to accommodate that request, give him a little more discretion as to size of burns and timing of burns. I'd be happy to draft something up for your looking at.
Because I believe that would have to be warned as a public hearing.
But the first thing would be to have you folks on board with a draft, which I will try to put together.
And I don't have problems with that. I have faith in the world on our wardens.
Yeah.
So I would say go ahead and draft it up and then we'll discuss it.
Will do.
Is that the board's pleasure?
You guys got a piano in there?
Somebody keeps texting me, I think. I can't shut that pair off.
Is that your granddaughter wanting some FaceTime?
Not this time, no. Sorry. I even told him, sorry, can't talk right now.
You can shut it off on the side.
This one, I don't know if it will, I've had that off before.
It's like country music better than that.
Okay, so we did that, we did Bradley. To appoint a representative to the Rutland Regional Transportation Council.
I have served as an alternate in the past. Kit Shaw had offered to serve as the full-time member. He has had to resign his post, so I'm happy to step up again as the representative for the town.
So, what's the board's pleasure there?
Good to me.
Yeah, fine to me.
I guess you're it, John.
Okay.
I guess, I got to sign this one?
I think so, at the bottom of the chair signs.
Okay, appoint a representative to the Rutland Planning Commission.
Yes.
Oh, that's, that was supposed to say-
That's better, yeah.
And that's going to be basically a reapportment of Dave Mills as the delegate and Dave Suley, senior, as the alternate.
As the alternate.
You still there, Dave?
You still here?
Has Dave Suley told you that he will do it?
Yes, he told Mark Winslow, who reported to me.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I didn't last, I talked with Mark a few days ago and he hadn't heard from him yet, so, okay.
He did last night.
Okay.
I'm willing to stay on for a while longer.
Thank you.
If you guys want me there.
Why, sure.
Maybe.
Maybe, she's-
Oh, listen, you can, you can go now, you can take my place.
So we need a motion to do that? I guess we should.
I'll make the motion.
We got a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in team.
Okay, so for, for the abstention. Yep. Appoint a town delegate to the VLCT annual business meeting, which is what, is that you, John?
That's typically been me. I'd be happy to do it again, I'm going to the meeting anyway.
Can we go, though? I'd very much love to go to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Typically, what is voted on?
It's part of town fair and that has become basically a two-day event with the business meeting, the first- meeting the first afternoon, and then the following day, there's both a trade show, there's workshops and seminars.
Yep, I've been to, I've been to one of the town fairs already.
Yeah, so that's what happens the second day.
So, what is, but what is like voted on, typically voted on at the meeting?
VLCT has kind of guidance for their lobbying team of two, which takes a position basically pro municipality on all things that are happening in the legislature. And it's their effort to speak on behalf of the towns, because it is our organization, to make sure that Montpelier doesn't do things that harm the towns and limit their freedom of movement.
What they're always doing.
That's basically their, the broad strokes of it.
All right, great.
So...
When I get, when I get the proposed policy language, I'm happy to distribute it to everybody, so you can have your input.
Yeah, please, that'd be great.
So, we need a motion to appoint John Haverson.
Make the motion.
We got a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye? Unanimous.
All right.
Okay, review and act on the lister's office errors and omissions.
Yes, from time to time, the listers become aware of an issue that they may have missed when assigning values to properties. They had not updated their records to reflect the removal of gas pumps, tanks, and the canopy from Keith's general store, and so Keith has asked that they be removed from part of their taxable property. And so, that's the lister error that they want us to approve, so they can make that change, the select board to approve.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Maybe a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Discussion proposal, replace the former part-time police officer.
Yes, perhaps we would like to talk about the identity of the possible hire in executive session, but in open session at least, we can talk about the fact that Tim Cornell has left his position as a part-time officer, and Chief Warful would like to fill it, so he has maximum flexibility for scheduling his needs in the future. This has nothing to do with adding hours of coverage.
No.
It's just filling a roster spot.
Yeah, okay. And we'll discuss the personnel and personnel, that's part of our executive session.
That's fine.
Okay. Consider releasing bonds for the, I think we spoke about that earlier, on the work on town.
That will require a signature, I think, of the select board chair.
Yeah, I think I did it already.
Okay.
It's in there. I know we're gonna do it.
If not, I'll chase you down.
It's not, we'll rip it up.
No, you have regional transportation commissioners and VLCT.
No, I didn't have that one, so...
I can probably give you mine. That would probably work, let me see if I can find it.
Well, let's make, we'll do it, clear it from the table, and then we'll be all set.
Yeah.
So, do we have a motion to do that?
Still won't.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
A motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There, I think that concludes all of our...
No, it does not.
Oh, wait a minute. We got one, the additional, aye?
Well, we already dealt with this lifeguard shelter, so, coin drop.
That's why, yeah. We had a proposal for a coin drop for the library, which we approve every year.
It could be Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Indigenous People's Day.
Actually, it'd be the weekend, October twelfth.
Yeah, on October twelfth.
Better known as Columbus.
Yeah, it used to be Columbus Day, but...
And we're looking to do it from ten to two.
From ten to two.
Saturday the twelfth?
Saturday the twelfth. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All ayes.
Four ayes, one abstention.
All ayes.
Hank did, Hank did.
Yes.
Okay. I guess now that clears our sheet, as far as I can tell.
Oh, that's a beefy one.
So, we are out of, yes, it is, that's a lot.
One thing, Tom.
Yes, Joe.
If I could bring it up, I was approached by somebody lives up on the Sagamon Road, and they were inquiring whether the lines in the middle of the road might get repainted this year. Is there any, is there any information that I can pass on?
Interesting, I thought they were all really clear, driven that road last summer.
I know that V-Trans has a policy of striping town class two roads.
That's for the highway farm, I guess.
Yeah, I'd be happy to pursue it with the responsible agency, whether it's V-Trans or ourselves. I forget whether that's a class two.
Last year, year before, we did that.
The paving was probably two or three years ago.
Because the lines are there, but they pretty well faded away. They were hoping to see it.
Okay.
But I think that's the same on quite a few roads, so I don't know whether the town is gonna freshen up some of that, or...
And again, some of this is done by V-Trans, I can certainly ask...
Check into it, John.
Yeah, happy to.
Okay, that concludes our open business.
Text you to see if that held.